Work session. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll jump right into it. First order of business is Mr. Frank Weber with McGriff Insurance Services on a Blue Cross Blue Shield discussion. Mr. Weber, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you so much. Happy post mortem. I will not take long unless you all have a lot of questions, but just really... Shall I stand back here?
You can sit right there.
I can sit right here, perfect. The main reason I'm here, really two items, and they're both compliance oriented. Since vacancy from last fall with the city controller, that was the designated contact person with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And since that point in time, there has been no designated contact person here at City Arrow. Now, I understand you're looking to fill that position, but there's, at least from my perspective, there's no reason to leave that position vacant for now as far as just a designated person that they can direct all their communications to. I actually talked to Lisa about this last week, and I have had a lot of ongoing discussions with Leslie Green and Terry Howard and other people in HR, and it just seems like the natural person in the interim would be your city clerk to be the designated person. Now, I've got the forms. They've been sent to Ms. Howard in the past to get signed. I think Lisa said that she does have those forms available. If not, I'll make sure we get them done tomorrow. But that's the main order of business. There's a real good motivation in getting this done because there's a check for about $88,000 sitting out there to reimburse. So as soon as we get that designation done, there's a little bit of other compliance. I have reviewed... These are my dog-eared copies of y'all's plan documents, and I have reviewed them. But I'm not a lawyer, and they need to be signed. They need to be finalized. As you see, they all say draft on them, so we need to have that done. But that's fairly easy to do once you get somebody designated to sign off on it. So that's the first order of business, and that's really the most important thing. But somewhat related to that is the whole issue of compliance. I brought some packets that you all don't need to look at tonight unless you just want to, but I've got one for everybody. This is also the planned performances in here through the end of January. And the section on the left has to do with compliance. Now, y'all are a non-ARISA employer, which means that you don't have to follow along with a lot of the rules and regulations that apply to companies that are in business. I've got some extra ones, too, so if y'all want to give them to anybody. I'm dropping my business cards all over the place, too. But anyhow, I have encouraged strongly that, since there's been turnover in HR also in the last couple of years, I've encouraged both Ms. Green and Ms. Howard to attend as many educational functions as they possibly can to make sure that they're meeting all these requirements. And there is one coming up on FMLA. And the good news about it was to me that the law firm that you all have engaged, the Coleman Firm, is actually the group that's doing a lot of these conferences. And I talked to one of their attorneys that's an expert on some of the stuff, and I told her, I said that I was going to be meeting with the city council tonight. And I'm just, you know, we, once again, it's very important for me to stress to y'all that over the years, I mean, I don't care how far back you go, almost as long as I've been doing employee benefits, most employers in this state have relied on Blue Cross and Blue Shield for compliance. And they stopped really doing compliance work about 30 years ago. They'll do documents, and they'll help a little bit, but as far as most compliance work, they'll help, but at the end of the day, they're not going to practice law either. They're not going to tell you what you can and can't do. They're going to help you through the process. As your consultant, I can't practice law either, but we can shortchange a lot of the work that an attorney needs to do. We can check and see where the problems are and the deficiencies, but at the end of the day, I always encourage my clients to run it by your counsel. And you all have an excellent firm that you all have engaged. I don't know how long you all have been with the Coleman Firm, but they do a great job. So I'm just going to encourage going forward that, you know, whether it's Lisa or Leslie or Terry or whoever's in those places going down the road, that they just bear in mind that they have resources with us, they have resources with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, but at the end of the day, they need to use us because we don't charge anything, and then get everything kind of somewhat, you know, the final touch by your law firm. Does that all make sense?
Yep.
That's pretty much it. So those two housekeeping items, one of them's kind of a detail thing. And what I'll do is, Lisa and I have already talked, so if y'all could let me know if you need any help expediting getting the forms signed and so forth. I did talk to the Blue Cross rep right before I came in this evening. She's in total agreement with me on what needs to be done. I know she's been really nervous about getting this. I know she's been pushing just as hard, and that's why I made Stone, who works with Will, fly house, your Blue Cross rep. But once again, if y'all have any questions, there are my business cards in there, cell phone, you can reach me at any time, and that's about all I got. I'd like to get that check to y'all.
Thank you, Frank.
Appreciate it.
Counsel, I haven't even had a conversation with Frank. It's probably been many months since I've seen him, but before he even, you know, said that we needed to... That he recommended Lisa, that's what I was thinking as well. Anybody have a different sort of opinion? Lisa, do we need to have a formal resolution to do that? All right. I think we might want to add that to the agenda tonight, just a resolution to name the city clerk as the designated contact person for Blue Cross Blue Shield. Do we need to also designate her as a signee of this?
The form is pretty self-explanatory, so if she gets a hold of it, y'all will look at it like that. I think they... Blue Cross doesn't really care who the person is, what the person's position is, as long as they have a name and a contact number and address. And I would say, you know, once again, I wouldn't make it a permanent change because me would be an interim until y'all make it.
Yeah. Interim, we'll call it interim.
We'll make Jay draft that when he gets here since he's late.
Who's that?
Jay.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Item number two, discussion of assessment repairs at the Welcome Center. Sherri Lee, did I see you come in?
And you should have in your packet there a scope of work for what we put forward. We need someone to take a look at the building, and there's a list of things that we thought should be included. And by we, you know, Richard and I looked at this a while ago, and then Jack, it came up during the museum advisory board meeting, and there was concern about the archives upstairs and about the structure itself, and some concern about the ethos failing, concern about moisture in the walls and things like that. So we put together this scope of work and wanted to go ahead and get someone to come out and look at it. And the mayor had selected someone that's already been out there once, just kind of, you know, talking with us, who has some knowledge of the building, who could look at it for us and do an assessment.
We knew some of this during the budget process, but, I mean, we have big budgetary maintenance issues with all of our buildings. This is one in many, so just due to no maintenance really on the buildings.
And I think one of the things that we want to be able to come back with you is, what is the best estimate just to fix the problem? That is, the ethos system that is delaminating and the water intrusion. And then the other question is, is there some further improvements that you, you know, and what those costs would associate with? Because it's kind of one of the things, if you start tearing the facade off a building and removing windows, you know, is that the time to look at an improvement that may make it more of an aesthetic amenity and more usable or functional? You know, I know that the museum's biggest challenge is they don't have a proper place, you know. Is that, you know, what would it cost to make that upstairs truly an archival vault type room and things like that? So at least be able to come back at, this is the minimum what we need to do, but here are some few options as far as improvements and things and what we think the associated cost on, so that we can plan for it in the next budget.
And we do have some research on archival space and some things that could be done. I met with the gentleman that helped Ballin County get their archival space started, and he's willing to give us some recommendations, too, when we get to that point.
Robert, have you taken a look at that building?
Not closely, but I did look at the front of it, saw it just pull away.
Buckling.
From the...
In your opinion, I mean, and the person that would be, you know, the mayor's chosen, Walcott Adams, and maybe wrongfully so, I think of them as strictly architects. Is this guy an engineer? I mean, this ain't more engineering than design right now.
Not necessarily.
And I was like, red flags immediately, but Sherri Lee explained that this was somebody who had already been working on it.
Right. And he had looked at the building and assessed it just visually already, Ryan Baker. And Ryan's an architect.
Yes, exactly. This is really the envelope and all that, that is really an architecture, you know? Because we're making the assumption that the mechanical and the electrical and all that that would bring engineers in place should be solid.
Structurally.
And structurally, I think the building, it's like HDL framing, so I mean...
The whole building is?
Well, it's a mix. There's wood floor joists in between and things like that, but as far as I think the structural part of the building, that's probably maybe really a good thing. It is just we've got a water intrusion issue. You know, the balcony is beautiful, but it is part of the problem, you know, and how do you put doors in there and make sure that you're not getting water coming off that balcony into those doors and, you know, maybe a threshold issue and things of that nature? But, you know, and I have become snake-bet every time you remodel a building. It always, you know, it tends to be costly.
So I guess, you know, what we were thinking, what Sherri Lee and I were thinking when we talked about this was, it's not going to get any better.
No, it's definitely not.
You know, if we're going to save a building, we need to, you know, take action sooner rather than later. And I guess we can have this assessment done and find out, you know, just how much the building is worth saving, you know? We may get a number back that scares us.
That's true.
And then you may find out that there's more to it once you start peeling back the layers of the onion.
He designed it.
Internal. It was done by the city. It was done by city employees.
Ryan Baker's an excellent architect.
He is, he is. And, I mean, he immediately saw some of the issues.
Well, that was kind of one of my, when I was saying that, I mean, I kind of look at them as premier, a premier outfit. Do we need premier on this building? The building is not so much premier.
Maybe we need a premier building. No, that's trying to scare you. We definitely need to address the moisture issue.
And I don't know if this is germane, but as far as the building's used, at the intermission of the parade Monday night, I decided to walk over to use the public restroom, and the men's line was about 150 people deep. So it does have a purpose, and it does get used at certain times of the year. So it was a very popular place.
Okay. Any questions? Y'all want to move this forward to the next meeting?
Yep.
Actually, we actually have a resolution prepared in here, I believe. Did you prepare one, Lisa? I thought it was somewhere. Okay. Do we want to walk that on tonight, or do y'all just wait to the next meeting?
I think we should go ahead and walk it on because we're not committing to price. I mean, we've still got a negotiated contract, so all we would be doing by delaying is just delaying by another two weeks. I mean, we still have an opportunity to look at it if the price comes back and it's not reasonable. I think it just is more efficient to walk it on.
Okay. Somebody else have a different sort of thing to add?
Jay, you all right?
No.
He not.
We're happy to answer questions for Jay when he gets here.
Right. That's true. All right. Let's see. I guess that we're done with that.
Thank you. And I think you're still...
Thank you.
You're up next.
Okay. Number three, dredging discussion for Fly Creek Channel.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President and Council Mayor. I'm going to be quick, and I think Mr. Olinger, who's the Commodore, probably wants to speak to this as well.
Just sit down here.
As you know, we asked you to reject the bid at the last meeting to be able to sit down with the sole bidder and see if we could get improvements. The bidder was willing to sit down and talk with us. Just a quick background, in the time of this process, he ended up winning a contract at Mexico Beach. And the problem is, is that they keep finding more and more stuff from him in that harbor area and those channels to dredge, and he is probably making real good money doing that. So that is kind of, that was part of the reason for his price response. He came back and, in keeping everything equal, he reduced the price by $25,000 in option A with some conditions that were favorable to us. One, he would be able to immediately start work upon execution of the contract's notice of receipt. He would be bringing a larger dredge from Louisiana with 16 inches, and he says he can complete the entirety of the dredge work in 30 clear weather days, okay? Whereas the contract was allowing up to 60 and counting weather days.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
He stakes 30 clear weather calendar days, and option B was 60 days. Was that 60 clear weather days or just 60 days?
In the case of the contract documents, if there are days that the weather does not permit dredge operations, those are not charged against him. So yes, those would be 60 clear weather days. And in the springtime, that may quake to 90 days if you have a bunch of bad weather. So you can't punish the contractor for days that he physically can't have his work.
Well, you can if you put it in the contract.
That's true. Option two is that if he can get his work done in Mexico Beach and bring his 12-inch dredge there, which is home-based in Magnolia Springs, back, he decreased the price on the dredging by $75,000 total. But the caveat and the conditions that are not in our favor...
50 or 75? 50.
It was 25 inch, or we were going to split it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that if you go from the original bid that we rejected, option A is 25,000 less. Option B is 75,000 less.
Got it.
Okay, so that's... But the difference between the two options is only 50, so you're correct there. But here is, is that the contract, the notice to proceed, would not be given until 90 days. And he'd have between 100... And it would allow between 90 and 180 days to begin work, okay? Which is three to six months. And since, and the original contract, time would remain the same. I did make a recommendation, it's not an engineering recommendation, it is Richard Johnson's personal being a cheapskate recommendation, and I said that if it was my money, I would go for the cheaper option because, you know, that time does not have a personal or professional meaning to me. However, that six months, and if our share is $25,000, that's a wonderful thing about having you guys here. Y'all make those financial decisions, not me. I made a recommendation, and I am not, again, it's not based on engineering or any other feasibility, it was just which number is bigger than the other number.
I'd like to also point out one thing, and that's that Ellis came here in February of last year to discuss the partnership, and unfortunately, our city attorney didn't say that that needed to be bid out until, what, eight months later, nine months later? So that's on us. And, you know, I feel like at this point, they've been very patient, and, you know, we do have to consider that in this whole scenario.
And I do want to make sure that I'm 100% supportive of whatever direction I want to go, and I think if we go early, that's wonderful. You know, there is a couple of notes in there. One, we have to execute a contract. And one of the things that's required by the contract is, of course, the contractor has to provide the bonds and things of that nature. Normally, in a perfect world, that's about a 10 to 14-day process before we have a contract the mayor can sign. That's just how long it takes the bond companies and everything to get together. And then our contract does allow, once we issue the notice of proceed, and we can't do that until we have a contract that's executed, that allows 15 days for mobilization. So just to understand that even though, when I say we get started right away, yes, we get started right away, but that means contracts get executed, pre-construction meeting and notice of proceed is issued, and then the clock starts. And at 15 days, then there's 60 days to get that, or 30-day clear weather days to get that work done. So I don't want, if you say yay tonight to either, to option A, we will get started tomorrow morning, but it doesn't mean there's going to be a dredge sitting out there on Monday morning.
That's the same thing to adopt.
Well, option...
The paperwork has to be done before anything's done.
That's correct, but...
Whatever date, whatever delay that would be, it would be the same delay.
That is correct. There's always, there takes a time to get everything in place. I just want to make sure that when I say get started immediately, that's what that means. And I hush. That's all I've got.
Counsel, I want to just, I want to point out one other thing that's not real apparent in the resolution. If you look at option A and B, option A, the 513, 750, option B, the 463, 750, both of those prices, just for full disclosure, include that additive alternate bid item of 33, 750. So I'm going to suggest you include it. That's for the jetty extensions, but just so you know, you do have the option to not include that 33, 750 in either option. So it would lower either one of those by 33, 750. My recommendation is to leave it in, but I just, I wanted you to know what all your options were. So, Counsel, do you have any comments?
I think Ellis has something to add.
Can I add, or do you want to ask him questions first and come back to me?
No, go ahead and add.
Yeah, you know, we feel like...
I'm going to get my guy with me.
Yeah, that time is of the essence on this project. You know, when you start looking at the calendar and realize, and I've spoken with the dredge man, we're looking at fall before he's in. You're looking at midsummer, those dredges are in Fly Creek, it's congested, that is the heart of the season. You're looking at fall before you're done, and then you're looking at north winds for the rest of the year to work against what you put out. So to me, in essence, you're losing a season with the timing of this. So yes, it's extra, but look at it as you're picking up a whole nother boating season. So if you divide this cost by six or seven, or five, worst-case scenario, you know, you're going to block one of those off with the timing of this work. So we feel like the advantage is, it is money well spent, and obviously, as partners in this project, we're willing to put up our half of that 50, and that's what we want. In fact, that is our, that's what I have approval to do tonight. So we think time is of the essence, we have the momentum, we need to get this done. There's a big deal to me in 30 days versus 60. That's less time, he's on our beaches, he's in and out. Hopefully, by Memorial Day, we're done. We've got a summer in front of us for all citizens, all club, all marina. It's, to me, it's, let's get it done. Let's get this thing done.
Comments, Counsel?
I mean, I think, go ahead, go ahead, Kevin.
I have to say, worst-case scenario, you look at eight months. With option B, $50,000, you basically saved it. I think that's money well spent, personally, the fact that what he's referring to is saying coming back. If you done good, you done, I think, half the, you do the job, and then a portion of that's going to come back on you during that season anyway. So I think you get more for your money, to be honest with you, for the option A.
And they're splitting it. It would be a split cost.
There's certainly got those embraces that, you know, could be effective if it's not done, that you do have that, you know, economic impact for the city.
And I would like to say I've never enjoyed working with a citizen as much as Ellis.
He has got the patience of Joe, and he never gets mad at you, and he's just supportive. So it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
So I'm with you guys, whatever y'all decide. Jimmy, do you have any comments?
I just think, you know, to split that and have 25,000 to hopefully get all the boaters and the community access sooner, I think that's probably money well spent. I don't have a boat, but...
You give your money ahead if you get now before the summer starts, it's a waste to wait and lose this summer, you're all in the next, basically, next summer, next fall.
Sell more fuel.
I like it.
So when somebody makes the motion tonight, make it for option A is what I'm hearing. We're done.
Thank you. I do have one other issue on this. You know, we had discussed, there are other fees that are besides the dredging. How do I address that with the Counsel from an overall cost standpoint? You know, the Arab Yacht Club's got a tremendous amount of fees already dumped into this thing, and there may be pre-sounding, pre-sounding and post-sounding. We're trying to talk the Corps of Engineers into doing that at no charge right now.
How much would you money we're talking about?
15 to 30,000. Not for that sounding, but for every, like, ADM, Corps, you name it.
To be part of the cost share, that's pretty costly to get it to.
I think it is, too, but why is it just coming up now?
It came up in the letter I sent originally in February. I gave the estimates in that letter.
I mean, that's part of the cost.
And I could substantiate it all with the, you know, with our receipts and checks and...
The only thing that was added is just the cost of the thing, so...
Yeah. What Richard got was the dredging, and he and I discussed it, and he said, we just got to bring that directly to the Counsel. I'm getting the dredging, which is what has to go to bid law.
Why don't you just bring us that, Ellis? I mean, we're going to move forward with this tonight, and bring us that.
Yeah, we can do that, because it's going to take me a while to put a bow on all that. Thank you.
I don't want that to get in the way of this.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, discussing a Valdott Winding project on State Highway 181.
Good evening.
Or old Highway 27.
Yes, sir. And I think I've got all the egg wiped off my face from last time we met and talked about this, but I did want to at least bring the copy of the plan and the highlighted part that shows where the discussion I had with the contractor on the site didn't include the additional work at 104, where we're actually going to put casing under the road and some more fittings that were going to be required that add up. The second page of this handout, by the way, is the, is the cost breakdown and the difference. And if you'll look, the original contract, it was to relocate the six-inch water main we had with the six-inch water main, was going to cost $106,000, which was part of the contract. And then if you look to upgrade that six inch to a 12-inch, the additional cost is $121,000. And, you know, just looking at capacity of a water main, a six-inch water main would have one-fourth the capacity of a 12-inch water main, and so, you know, for a little over double the price, we're getting twice that in return for capacity. But it is the start of an upgrade of the 12-inch...
Four times the capacity, you mean?
Yes. Well, the six inch...
Twice the price, four times the capacity.
Yes, correct. And so I apologize for not being more thorough in my first evaluation, but when we were talking to the contractor on the side of the road the day before the meeting, and he talked about just having to relay a 12-inch line instead of a six, I took him at his word for that and didn't think there was anything beyond the intersection to deal with, but there obviously is. And so, but we still believe it's the right thing to do. We...
Twice the price, four times the capacity.
Yes, correct. And so I apologize for not being more thorough in my first evaluation, but when we were talking to the contractor on the side of the road the day before the meeting, and he talked about just having to relay a 12 inch line instead of a six, I took him at his word for that and didn't think there was anything beyond the intersection to deal with, but there obviously is. And so, but we still believe it's the right thing to do. We anticipate significant growth, you know, along 104, and this will be a big step toward providing that capacity.
It's 2,800 feet?
2,800 feet, yes.
Richard, where would the funds come from?
Well, I have to leave that up to the planning department. I think there are some reserve funds available.
There are reserve funds.
And I think their reserve funds are from, you know, connection fees that are set aside for this purpose.
Mayor, we have the money?
Oh, yeah, we do, in reserve.
You're okay with spending it?
I don't know that we have a choice, but I think that this is the right thing to do.
We're 80,000 over on the dredging.
We're not, well, those are worth fees, and you're splitting them, but-
Well, that was our question.
I tell you, that cost, unfortunately, if we would have-
No, I'm just thinking about the transfers from utilities to general fund for that.
Well, the dredging is a city expense, and this is utility.
I know, but you had had a, you were concerned about not meeting budget on a similar, not similar item, but another item a few weeks ago, and so I just want to make sure you're okay if we, if we-
Well, I think that was for something that was, something that could be planned later. This was, are you talking about the bike trails?
Yeah, but I was trying to bring that up, but that was 9,000, and the dredging's 80,000 over budget.
That's why I said, is we, we're going to have things that are not in the budget that we're not going to really have a choice. And that's, this is on the utility side. Utilities not only have reserves, but they're having more profit.
I don't disagree, I just want to make sure you're okay with it.
But, yeah, the other one is not a city budget item, the dredging, this is not.
Is that, how do we, with this diagram here, that 104 is going under 104?
Yes, the, on the top of the page is 104 coming from top to bottom, and then 181 going south is off to the left side of the page. So, and that's where, you can see the canopy of the gas station on the southwest corner of the intersection, that's kind of a landmark there for that intersection.
That's right here.
Yes, that's the field island canopy. But it's just part of, you know, providing longer term capacity and future needs. And here again, you know, spending money for the future may be a hard pill to swallow, but, you know, that's why we look at rates, and that's why we look at connection fees, and that's why we're doing the cost of service study to make sure we're prepared to make these investments for the future.
And there's a lot of things that we didn't plan on in the past that we're going to have to redo, and it's going to cost us more money, so.
Richard, if I look at this note, help me understand this, I'm looking at page two.
Right.
And I'm looking at the Duffel iron fittings and the unit price, 1025, you have a quantity of 1,700 on the first line there, and then on the second line, you have 51,550.
Yeah, and that's in pounds, and the 1,700 is six inch fittings, and then the 12 inch is about four times.
It's 3,400, 3,425 additional pounds.
Right, that's correct.
That's what I was trying to, trying to understand there. I didn't know why we needed more fittings, we're just going to a different size.
The 12 inch one just weighed a little bit more.
It's not like the Duffels, it's really worth it.
Right. But the contractor, and Jay met with the contractor yesterday afternoon, and there may be a little bit of room to save a fitting here and there, but it won't be a whole lot. But they are in a hurry to try to get the pipe ordered and be prepared to install it. And I'm not asking you to necessarily pass a resolution tonight, but to know we can move forward, I think would be an advantage to the contract.
I believe, at least, should we have that on the agenda already? Thank you, Les. Counsel? What do you say?
Yeah. Walk it on.
All right.
Well, thank you very much. It's at our advantage, actually. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, discussion of proposed revisions to Planning Director's job description. I don't have anybody down. Who was going to discuss that? Leslie?
I sent the comps, please.
I don't know what it said, the job description, because it's more about the comps.
It's more about the comps that go with it. We did a survey and looked at, and by we, I mean, the Human Resources Department did a survey, looked in the areas, and looked at comparable areas for the Planning Director position, and we found that in our planning department, that it is way behind where it should be, and we would like to be able to attract and retain quality applicants for a position of this sort.
Well, I mean, the Planning Director was my first department head hire, and based on citizen concerns and my concern, it is the most, one of the most important directors that we need right now. And it's a huge loss, but we do need to hire the absolute, you know, most experienced, and especially with the comprehensive land use plan coming up this year, so we just need to attract the best. And we are under, as far as comps, and I sent you all the comps in an email at least a week ago.
And when looking at comps like that, and when deciding what a salary range goes with that position, you look at the consequence of error, the responsibility, and the education experience needed for it, it all goes into, to what you're looking for when deciding the correct salary range in it.
Well, what are we talking about on the range? What are we, are we talking about changing the pay grade, or what are we, I'm sorry, we don't, I mean, we need something to go by. And I apologize to be sitting, I don't have it, do you have a copy of it?
Okay, I don't have the pay grade in front of me, but this is what, you've got it here.
That was Foley.
Well, currently, Fairhope is, I'm not sure what pay grade that is.
I believe it's a, it's a 28.
No, I don't think it's 28, is it?
Is it 28? I think it's a 28. Let me look, I've got my computer real quick.
I've got it. Kevin brought it up, Kevin brought it up, so I'll just tell you, we're just talking pay ranges. Daphne has a low of 68 to one, a high of 116, call it 116.5. Foley, 87.7, low, to 131.6. High, Gulf Shores, is 92. So 127.8. And Faro is 62.6 to-
100, yeah.
It actually just went up, it was 95, but-
It was 95, yes.
100.2.
And even some of the, some of the ranges are wider than what we have.
Did y'all get that? Did y'all get that, Counsel?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'd have to say, just looking at it, it certainly does look like we're pretty lucky. Any other comments? I mean, it's a, do you have a suggestion for that?
Well, right now, I would say it would, it would need to be like a 31.
You know, the pay grade?
That would be the pay grade for it. We need to pull that up. And even, we go from 28, and then we have like two, three pay grades that don't even have, that don't have salary ranges that go with them. So, and I'm sorry that I don't have it in front of me, but-
Yeah, well, I'm also worried about the grade, as I am with numbers though, right now, so I need to- Did we go, this is all Baldwin County? I mean, and Baldwin County's, no, planning is definitely important to everybody in Baldwin County now. Do we have anything from around the state, just anything outside this area? Give us any kind of idea?
There is one that I sent you, it's Mountain Brook, which has a similar population to ours. And it is quite a bit different. I want to say theirs goes to like 187.
I didn't put that one in there, because I was trying to keep it local.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying not to give us a heart attack.
Yeah, but it's quite different. It's way higher, so.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't, anybody, do you have a thought? Did you bracket it? Did you have a thought?
Well, I mean, the bracket that you're talking about, I'm trying to plan what exactly that would be.
I can grab my laptop and get it real quick.
And do we know what these cities are paying their planners? I mean, these are the brackets, do we know what they make? Is that public record?
Yeah, I do, but I just put the ranges in. They're over midpoint.
The range is usually based on experience, so we're not comparing an unknown person with whatever their experience is. We're paying, we're, we need to look at the pay range.
Okay, I would say, I would say at least the top of the bracket needs to be 135.
This is what, you said 31? And this, this needs to have the increase.
Is that, I've got this one, this is a new one. So we've got, for a 31, it goes from 77 to 124, and I don't think that's high enough. And then a 33 is from 89 to 143. So we have a 32 that has no salary assigned to it. And I think it would fit in there. A 31 is 77 to 124.
And a 32, if we had one, would be whatever, somewhere in between.
I think that's the top that we have right now. It didn't even go that high, I don't think, until we, I worked with Personnel Board to increase it from, based on each incremental pay grade, with it's already in place.
It sounds like we've got a 31 and a 33, and it sounds like the perfect range might be 32, which we don't have.
That's what I would, I would think, yeah. So we can, we can figure that out, but I think that would be the perfect, perfect range.
I'd still like to know what the other cities are actually paying. I get you on the range, and we can get a range, but I'd still like to know what they're making. You say you do have that?
I have it somewhere, mhm.
Well, we want to post this job too, and that's the main thing. Before I went out of town, I asked Lynn and Leslie to try to get this on the agenda so we can go ahead and post the position. And waiting until the next council meeting, it's going to put us two weeks, you know, and we only have a month, a month notice, so I really want to get it out there now.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is no small consideration to ask us to come in a work session and, you know, five or 10 minutes, increase a very important person's pay by potentially, potentially 35 to 40 percent.
That's why I sent the email before I went out of town a week ago.
Well, that was in consideration of an existing employee, I didn't-
No, that was included, the job, the pay ranges for comps for Planning Directors.
I understand, but it was in relation to an existing employee?
Yeah, I know, but knowing those comps, I mean, that's, what we're going to do, because not every position, we want to get a comp on, and we've had it in the budget to do a comp study, we're doing a structure study first. And we spoke with University of Auburn, was it last week?
Last week, mhm.
Okay, and they can do that for us, and then based on that structure by each department, then you can do the comp study on where we need to be with the positions that are recommended. Some might be not needed anymore, and then we might be adding some. So we're doing that first before the comp study. But right now, you know, we're just having to update them as things come up.
The other thing that we've done, Counsel, is we've had Personnel Board weigh in on these decisions as well.
Which puts us further back. I mean, if we want to take six months to fill this, which I don't think we should, you know.
Well, I mean, we could have got the Personnel Board involved last week.
They can't meet until Tuesday.
Are they meeting Tuesday?
Yes.
But it's for, it's for something else, it's not, it was for another issue.
We need to add this to their agenda to look at it. They've looked at it?
No, it's already been added.
Oh, it's been added.
What I'm saying is, you don't have another council meeting for two weeks. We're halfway into, you know, the time that we're looking for, we've got to post it. I mean, when I said efficiency, we've got to be able to turn around a decision and post things, because we want to have that time before someone leaves to do training, and we're going to lose that opportunity if we don't make a, make a decision.
I hear you, I just, it's a, it's a, I was a little bit worried about making a rushed decision in a few minutes. What do y'all think, Counsel?
I'd like to see how the qualifications are going to change based on that pay range, to me personally.
Well, the job description, based on where it is today, okay, we're going to update it to enhance it, is the pay range that I already gave you.
What is that going to imply?
So that's not-
I mean, what is that job description going with why? I mean, we don't know what it looks like.
I said, at the very minimum, it's what we have in place right now, and that is what we've, we've already sent you for the comp. So if anything, enhancing it might increase the pay range, but we're not asking for that. We're asking to be, you know, comparable to what our neighbors are paying.
Anybody else have comments on that?
I mean, I think that, you know, looking at just the comparison of these four municipalities, I think we need to increase our range. I mean, we're on the low end, and we certainly have a lot of really pressing planning issues, so I don't think it's unreasonable to increase the range. I think that that pay grade 32 seems like it would probably be the appropriate range, but we don't have a definition of that.
I could put something together for you and get it to you by the morning.
But then are we voting on something in advance of that, or are we just trying to post the job, and then you can add the pay range later?
Well, we want to post the job, but you can't put a pay range until it's approved, so.
I think what she's asking us to do is approve a pay range tonight. That's bottom line.
I can, I can get with Jill, and we can come up with something if we could come up with-
Well, I mean, then it's after this, and you got to wait two weeks, unless you have a special reading.
Is there any way y'all can define what that pay grade would be tonight?
Well, you said 31 would be 77 to 131.
I mean, I'm coming up with a ballpark of 83 to 133, ballpark.
I think it would be higher than that.
I just took the 31, the 33, and I split the difference between 83 to 133.
There's way too much math going on.
I mean, that seems to be the simple way to do it.
And then they go to 33.
It's not a plan.
It's going to be split.
It's going to be split. Wouldn't it be split between thirty-one and thirty-three?
Yeah. Wouldn't it be split between thirty-one and thirty-three?
That's what I did.
Oh, okay.
I had to split the difference. And it's one, it's eighty-three and one thirty-three, five is what we...
Oh, okay.
Got it?
Well...
And I wrote it down.
It's one twenty-four and one forty-three. Got it?
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be, you could say a not-to-exceed amount, and then we could get the exact amount, you know, based on the difference in the grades.
Right.
I would have worked on this, except I literally got back from Peru last night, so, and these are the things that I wanted to have done while I was gone.
Eighty-three to one thirty-three, five was the number you got splitting the difference?
Yes, sir. Or is it nine? Nine, seven, seven, three. Um... Is there any other way to pass it without having a special meeting? We don't vote on it tonight?
That's why I said you could have a not-to-exceed, but to get that exact range, I think it's just a matter, if you send that to me, it's probably just a matter of...
Subject to sign off by the Personnel Board, I mean...
If they're meeting on Tuesday, that's fine.
Can you make it subject to them signing off on it on Tuesday? If they bless the reins, then, if they concur?
I'd be fine with that.
That'd be good. I think Tuesday's not a big deal, right?
It's tomorrow. I mean, no, it's Tuesday.
I've got five weeks left.
We can't wait three working days. We really are...
Well, this is a bad time around, frankly.
It just happens. Okay, so, you want to say a grade one thirty-two with a pay range of eighty-three to one thirty-three, five, subject to, um, approval by the Personnel Board? Uh, no changes to the job description. I don't want to sign a blanket job description.
No, I think, I think the current job description is, is probably fine at the moment.
Well, look at this. This has it. It says thirty-two. I bet this hasn't been updated since the...
Where's the job description?
Because you could do, how much is the quota? Ten percent?
So, there are changes proposed for the job description?
It was three percent and twenty-two. See what it is. Now, it's six percent, so...
Hawaiianian.
I can do that now.
We can't change that, though. I mean, I don't want to change it. The Personnel Board's going to look at changes to the job description on Tuesday?
We don't really have changes to it. If anything, it would be just taking responsibilities out or bringing, enhancing things.
That's a really big deal to us, though. I mean, moving people around and changing who reports to who, to this council is really a deal.
It's not, it's not, it's not a structural thing. It's, it's not a structural thing.
Okay, so, this is old, but if you're looking at thirty-two and you do a three percent first, and then it's ten percent, I can do that real quick.
Y'all want to walk that on to the agenda?
Here's, here's thirty-two from the old pay grade, which you'll have to adjust three percent and then six percent. It is seventy-eight, eight seventy-six, point fifty-seven. Mid-range is one oh-two, five thirty-nine, fifty-four. High is one twenty-six, two oh-two, fifty-two. And I'll see, I'll just put in, let me see.
Well, I mean, if the, if the, if the, if the number's given for one thirty-one and one thirty-three are the current numbers, and we split the difference, I mean, this...
I mean, that's going to be...
Yeah.
More than likely what it is. Let me see if it works that way.
Doesn't quite work out that way. If you do three percent and six percent...
Y'all want to walk this on? You want to walk this on, too?
Is it just six? It might just be six. I'm not sure which one I have up. It doesn't have a date on it.
Yeah, we're at one thirty-three, seven seventy-five, seven seventy-four.
Well, that's, it's just six percent then.
Okay, we'll walk it on.
Thank you.
I'm glad we're out of work session items because the, the council agenda may never end if we, uh, if we didn't run out of these regular council. All right, committee updates. Jimmy?
Um, I don't have any committee updates. Robert?
Uh, I'll give my EAC update or council comments, a bike, ped, ped bike, yesterday. Uh, got a, a new member will be brought next meeting, and they're looking to add a few more, so get a little interest on the ped bike committee, the next committee.
All right.
That's it.
Okay. Kev?
Well, you just heard the Personnel Board meeting Tuesday. Actually, it's a special meeting, especially on, and then work on some other things.
Okay.
Well, we are in the process of training the supervisors now on the safety that the directors went through last year.
Yeah, and having you brought that, Ron, of course, has some health issues, but he really, he's really strong on this, and he's doing an excellent job.
I know.
And that's not funny, but I'm just thinking, of all the luck we get running through.
I know.
He's doing such a good job with it. I mean, if you convince me to start putting safety and destruction matters, you've done pretty good.
I think to make it interesting and passionate, I mean, it's magical.
Uh, I want to be pretty quick on department head updates today, so, Eric?
Yes. Very quick. Um, I have four items on the agenda, and I, I am sorry, I have something I have to be at at seven-thirty, so the first two I will be here for, they're the public hearings and the first reading of the flood ordinance. Um, if we don't make it to that, item number fourteen is the resolution to adopt the flood insurance rate maps. As a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program, we had new maps issued two years ago. We've been going through a review and comment process. That has all been done. That's all taken care of. We had an open house ourselves, and then we've participated in two others countywide. Um, for us to maintain our standing in the National Flood Insurance Program, I need a resolution from the City Council adopting the new maps that are effective April nineteenth. That's why that's on the agenda. As soon as I have that, I will forward it to FEMA and to the Alabama Office of Water Resources. So, if I'm not here to explain that, um...
Go back to number nine, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, the new flood ordinance, yes. As part of the new map adoption, one of the things that's going on nationally, and I get, I get bulletins from FEMA, um, they are trying to really revamp the flood insurance program. Between all of the storms, between Sandy and everything that has gone on, FEMA is billions of dollars in debt, and they, one of the things that happens in the flood insurance program is, unlike a normal insurance policy, the only people that pay in are the ones that have losses, so they never get to a point where they're in the black. So, one of the things they're doing is trying to reduce flood losses, and that means every effort possible to eliminate potential flood losses from older homes that are built in flood zones below the base flood, okay? So, they have mandated as part of the new flood map adoption that all the communities have to adopt the model ordinance that has been produced by FEMA and the Office of Water Resources. Normally, when we do an adoption on a new flood map, we just, the points that are changed, a few items are what you adopt. They are mandating that we strike the entire ordinance and adopt the model ordinance that they've given, which have some additional restrictions in it. So, I gave it to Lisa, and I think it's like twenty-six pages of stuff. Uh, a lot of it's the normal stuff that we have been doing. They have put some additional restrictions in it, but that is why you are looking at an entirely new ordinance.
Have you read it all?
Oh, I wrote it.
You wrote the twenty-six pages?
I went through line by line. It was the model ordinance. I went through line by line and, and corrected every bit of it.
Are you okay with it?
I, I am, because we have to do it.
You don't even have a choice.
We don't. Uh, there were some things that they put in there as options that I thought were kind of intrusive. One of the things they wanted was the city to require non-conversion agreements for folks that have houses where you got open space below the base flood, require the owners to sign a non-conversion, and us require them to record it with the deed of the property. The realtors are actually in favor of that, the ones I've spoken to, because you sell a house, somebody's done an illegal conversion below base flood, they got a bedroom or a bathroom down there, well, when FEMA comes in and does their audit, they make them rip it out, or they make us make them rip it out, let me put it that way. Um, I took that out because that's just making somebody affect the deed of their property. We enforce it. We still have the enforcement authority, but going to the point of actually mandating they put something on a property deed, I thought was intrusive. Um, yes, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of what they did. Um, you know, there's some additional penalties they put in for non-compliance, and we need to get this done because I am probably due for our flood audit next year. ISO's coming in May, so that's part of why we're doing the building code adoption. FEMA and Office of Water Resources are going to come audit our flood program, and that's probably going to happen in either late 2019 or early 2020. I would imagine Mr. Brown might have some comments about it, so...
Termination of water service?
Yes. Well, right now, I have the authority, if someone refuses through municipal court or whatever actions to come into compliance, I have the authority to require, or to, um, require that their power and water be cut off. Uh, we've never gotten to that point, but that's, that's something we have the authority to do now. And that is only if someone is absolutely not going to meet the requirements. We've done everything we can to try to get them to do it. We've taken them to city court, and they've been ordered to do it, and if they refuse to, that's for those types of instances. The other thing they put in there was what FEMA calls a section thirteen sixteen for folks who absolutely refuse to meet the requirements. FEMA declares that property a thirteen sixteen, which means you cannot get flood insurance, and you are not eligible for disaster funds if there were ever a hurricane or a flood. And that's a very rare thing, but it's in there because there are some folks that just refuse to meet the requirements. We've never had one here, but they do have them down at the beach.
That makes sense to me. Cut somebody's water off.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Then you're cutting all the relief off.
Well, and the other option is, that's after we would have gone to municipal court, so then it becomes a full criminal violation, because if you're ordered to correct something by the court and you don't do it, then that's a criminal violation. So, I, you know, it's in there, that's something they put in there. I don't envision that that would hap, I really don't envision anybody pushing that hard. But you never know. Um, is there, do you have any other questions about that? Okay, yeah, like I said, the, the number fourteen was the adoption of the flood map, the resolution. Number twenty-five is the purchase of a vehicle, and I'm going to beg your forgiveness, I'm fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred over budget. Um, I had budgeted twenty-five, the vehicle's twenty-six-three or twenty-six-four, uh, twenty-six-three. When Tim went up to the Aldott thing, he, there was, there's a really good vehicle, a fairly new vehicle with good money, and that's, it was twenty-six-three. So, um, I'm going to ask your forgiveness. I came in under budget last year on my truck, and, uh, we're ahead on permit intake, so I can cover it, but, uh, I, I did want to say that before you got it, because that's going to be the first thing you're going to say.
And the, uh, what was it? The, uh, anyway, the big check, we did put that in.
Oh, the big check? Well, yeah, no, actually, that came in, that's correct. Uh, and actually, there are two large projects that were budgeted for last year that did not happen, and we still met our projections. They're going to happen this year. The set, the last phase of Three Circles Church is going to happen, and we have been told that the project on Bancroft, where the old auto AC project was, that is actually going to happen. They're going to build that, too.
Anyway, in other words, the income from that...
Well, well, I can cover thirteen hundred if it's a problem.
We'll find, we'll find a place to spend the building.
I appreciate it. If you have any questions, that's, I just, if I'm not here, uh, I wanted to let you know what they were.
Thank you. Shirley?
Quick update. This falls under the last item with the grants. There's something that came up. This past week, we kicked off the National Park Service Connectivity Master Plan Stakeholder Meeting. Um, they came in town and worked with a, a group of people to start looking at maps and looking at connectivity all over the city. Um, part of that, kind of like these other grants, even if they're small, what happens is they start finding other opportunities for us. So, they want to sponsor us, um, to apply for another grant. It is a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, but the due date, um, is before the next council meeting, and they just told me about it this week, so, um, I wanted to pass this around to y'all so you can look at it.
Is it a hundred percent?
It's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, no, the match is all in kind, so there's no cash match. And what we want to, what I'd like to apply for is for the, um, uh, living shoreline and landscaping at Fairhope Docks for the waterfront there. Um, part of a project we're all working on together, various parts of, and, um, it's something we have to do down there anyway to achieve the green, clean and resilient marina status. Um, and we would, it's something we would pay for to do ultimately, the landscaping and everything. So, we're looking at pieces of that, the overall Fairhope Docks plan, and I'm looking for funding resources for different components of that, and this is an opportunity that could help us kickstart it.
So, this says matching funds of up to twenty-five thousand.
Right, it's, um, it can be all in kind.
Yeah.
And I already, I had a preparation call with, um, the Park Service and gave them, we went over two potential ideas, and they really liked the docks idea.
What are the ideas again?
Um, this was one of them. The other one was to look at part of the Rotary Youth redevelopment project that we were, that we've started discussing. Um, they have a nature trail component of that, that we're talking about with the Rotary Youth Center, but they really, they liked this one because, um, of the other work that we've done down at the marina, that, um, it's water access, recreation, they, they liked that part of it.
What about the last sentence in this, where it says, "Projects must take place in collaboration with MPS administered parks, national parks, national trails, wild and scenic rivers."
Yeah, so this, um, they, uh, they said that this will qualify because it connects, even though it's Sea Cliff Drive, but it does connect to the Eastern Shore Trail, in their opinion. So, mapping-wise, we, we looked at all of that together, and because the Eastern Shore Trail is, you know, connected to that waterfront.
Is that a national trail? The Eastern Shore Trail and the National Trail?
It is. It is. Mhm. So, I, I'd like to, I mean, and again, it's kind of like other opportunities. I can go ahead and apply for it, and if we get it and we don't want to accept it, we can always not accept it, but I wanted to get started on it, and I didn't want to waste time, you know, putting the proposal together if, you know, I didn't have support for it. So...
I'm just laughing because I said, you know, if there are no more work session agenda items, you know, the, the council meeting won't grow. Apparently, I was wrong about that.
If there's no money, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's no money concern, but, but, because we put that resolution in place that requires that I get, um, all grants permission from y'all.
Well, it requires all kinds of services, which is, but it's...
From council.
It's in kind, you're still...
But a lot of times, when you find out about grants, the timing of it doesn't, it's not in line with council meetings.
The council meetings, it can be pretty tight. And if there's a cash match, I mean, it's a different story, I understand.
Item ninety-eight?
Well, and this is something we were going to do anyway.
Right.
I mean, it would be in the plan for resilient marina.
It will.
All right, counsel, what do you, what's your, what's your choice on this?
Better read past debate.
Is that, is that your way of saying you want to add this, too?
We can start meeting once a week.
Bad precedent.
The only other thing I want to tell y'all is, um, the alleyway kickoff meeting has started. We're in a second meeting next week. Jimmy, you're the, I think, designated, okay?
I'll just send it to somebody else in my office.
Okay. Um, we'll start seeing preliminary designs, which we'll bring back and share. The alleyway project.
Oh, alleyway, alleyway.
Yeah, so that's moving. And I know that Richard Johnson has ordered those parking, you've ordered the parking signs, right?
Now, where's the sign on the street?
We have, and I don't want to put anybody on the bus, but, but our best buyer is on
We have, and I don't want to put anybody on the bus, but our best buyer is on it. We're trying to source what we need, and we don't, we don't state that list, and we haven't yet to be enabled to run. So, we're now getting free process here.
And is the light got, the light is taken care of at Volanta?
Yes.
I think I've actually caught a green light there.
I think I just saw it.
I caught Gaffer today, my way down here. But Volanta was nice. There was nobody there, and traffic was, traffic was moving. All right. Any other directors?
Actually, I just had two things, but y'all just went over one. We got that light.
Are we going to add things to the agenda?
No, sir. We got that light at Volanta. It's actually taken care of. We changed, we added a couple more sensors. So, what was happening when they had the sensors before is people were coming up to the stop bar and then pulling forward, and the sensor was behind the stop bar, so it wasn't detecting the car. So, they went back to a timer, and that's why there was red lights when nobody was on Volanta. So, we put sensors in front of the stop bars now to catch those cars that are doing it. It seems to be working pretty well.
It does, it's.
So, and we got the 46 KV transmission switch replaced on Tuesday. That went really well. Took about six hours to get that work done, and everything's in place, and now we can kind of go back and replace the original pole that we were trying to do when the switch failed. So, we'll get that scheduled in the next couple of weeks. So, it's only a couple of things I have for you, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Don, do you have anything? Lynn, do you have anything? Richard?
Don, can I go right?
Chief, you have anything?
Oh, well, we have just a little bit of time. I want you to know, since we've got the video camera and identifying issues with the sewer line, we're finding that we do need a point repair contract in place, so I'm working with DeeDee and Jennifer on putting that together and bidding it. Now, that's another item that doesn't have a budget associated with it, but, and it's one that I think if we get in the process of having this point repair system on an annual contract, when, when the restore funds do become available, I think that transitions